I have the little child.
Was that this week?
Uh-oh, they must've forgot about it.
Hey guys, I'm gonna get started, um, 'cause I think we might want some extra time at the end. Let's start, we're gonna skip forty and come back to it, can we do the fifty one?
Sure.
Uh, this is Nino. Yes, uh, this is regarding a change, proposed change to the sidewalk, to the driveways in the residential area. Uh, we already have, uh, an ordinance that pertains to commercial that, uh, specifically says that a new driveway in a commercial sidewalk has to be hard surface or concrete or asphalt. We'd like to do the same thing for residential, I mean, looking at some of the gravel driveways that we have, uh, and they're, they're not taken care of, we don't know how wide they are, they could just put an additional gravel, make it wider than wider. Sometimes they do an extension, you know, just to park cars in there, and they really uncapped them, I can show you some pictures of what I, you know, where I see just growing the city, and I, I strongly believe that, you know, if we change the ordinance, you know, without affecting the existing ones, if you like the new ones, I think that would, you know, help enhance the city.
Now, if we, take Mr. Gaddetti, if somebody wants to replace their driveway, and they actually dig it out, would that ordinance cover, now they have to replace it with the hard driveway cement or?
Likely, the way it's currently worded, yeah.
Okay.
And if they replace, um, the gravel with the main driveway, which says some people have the gravel parking area, they would have to replace the gravel parking area with?
Well, I, I, I think the, the cutoff line is probably forty percent, if you're replacing forty percent of driveway, because less than forty percent is kind of a considerate repair.
Okay.
If you go over forty percent, now you have to replace the whole driveway, and if you have an addition to decide if we're moving through the gap.
Even if it's a different material?
Yeah.
Did this go to planning commission, like we proposed?
I think we've only, Tom Robert, I think it needs to go to planning, right?
Yeah, but we haven't yet, it would be on the agenda next one, next meeting.
Second read. Second read? All right, any other questions?
All right, fifty three.
This is the TIF for Divinity Landing, it's the project that's going to place next to Northwoods. Are they looking for a first read on this?
Yeah, so I can let the schools know, even though they're being kept told, we still have to send a notice to them.
So, when it says emergency ordinance, what is that?
It's just...
That's legal mumbo jumbo, that drives me nuts.
Means it's immediately effective upon passage, not subject to referendum.
So it doesn't even have to do the third read?
Mayor's like, ah, no, it doesn't mean nothing, and Mark's like, oh!
It's more of a...
I said legal mumbo jumbo.
You probably, you probably explained it in orientation, I hear.
No, it's a fair question.
Yeah.
We all forget every system.
Absolutely.
Um, any other questions on fifty three?
Hey, while we're on the top of it real quick, is that a state mandated, mandated thing that you have to say emergency, or federally mandated?
It's in, yeah, it's contemplated in the revised code, but it's also contemplated in our own code and charter.
Has anyone tried to get rid of that, emergency, 'cause it gives the wrong impression?
Well, there's not necessarily a reason to unless you wanna make all your ordinances subject to the thirty day referendum at all points in time. You know, it's really, uh, I wanna say a tactical tool, but if there is a situation where you need to pass something, and have it effective and not subject to challenge, in those instances, um, that's the whole point of that emergency language, so.
Got it.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you're fine, fifty four.
Mr. Gilabey.
Yes, uh, this is the Longwood Trail Installation Project, this is a planned capital project for the last four years, as most of you folks on council would certainly remember, uh, you see the map, uh, in the packet, showing the location of the trail loop, paved asphalt ten feet wide, just about a mile long, uh, this contractor, same contractor that worked in the park last year, they paved the main driveway all the way back to the loop, uh, so they're a little bitter again this year, and, uh, we would ask for one, two, three, so we can begin the process.
Did the, did the map change at all since the, your initial?
Yeah, there's been some slight changes, but nothing significant, as we worked with, uh, the rec department, uh, over the summer, walked the trail and staked it out, we made some, some slight adjustments.
There was a resident that had some concerns, they're getting too close to their home, and after meeting with them, I think we figured it probably made sense to move a little bit.
Yeah, so we kept that... Yeah, we did, yeah.
So they're happy and we're all good.
All right, any other questions on fifty four? Okay. Um, fifty five, I guess I could speak to this.
We had, um, a resident reach out to us, or I think maybe only to me, um, and I know that others on council have talked to people about it before I was even on council, that this is about parking recreational vehicles in your own driveway visible from the street. And the idea of this ordinance, um, which I'm gonna just keep it first read so we can talk about it, and maybe get some feedback from residents, but the concept is, between the months of, I think it's currently drafted, it's May?
May first.
May first, from May first to the end of September, the beginning of September, I can't remember.
Yeah, I think it's the end.
Yeah, the dates are kind of in flux, right?
Nine, five, one and nine thirty.
Okay, um, that the current rules on having your RV not visible from the street would be suspended, so that those people in the city that have an RV and wanna use it on the weekend can have it out in their driveway, prepare it, clean it, take it, bring it back and forth from wherever it is they take it to camp, and that the city wouldn't, uh, have to, during those months that people are using them, send them letters saying you need to move it and make it not visible, but outside of those months, the existing restrictions would apply. And, um, there's, uh, the thought was, get this introduced so we could talk about it, and see if anybody has any concerns or improvements. It looks like you might have a question.
No question, I got a suggestion.
All right.
I think we should move that back to March first versus May first. You have people that as soon as the weather starts changing, um, spring breaks and everything else, they get their RVs out, their pop-ups, whatever they may be, their little boats to go fishing, and they're getting ready, you know, cleaning them out, airing them out, getting them ready to go, if they gotta wait till May to bring them back into their yards, you got two wa, two months wasted that they can't take them, and they, you can't bring them home for, uh, if, if they're going on a spring break, you know, the kids are off to school. I think we should back it up to, uh, March first.
I think that's, that's quite a long...
Campgrounds aren't open.
Pardon?
Campgrounds generally, I used to have a trailer, so I'm pretty familiar.
I had a camper.
But they, most, I'd say ninety-five percent are not open until usually May, there's none really open in April. And, and what I'm, I'm trying to be cautious about here is getting into the, the trap of them staying in the yard too long, 'cause we get a lot of complaints.
You can go to any KOA almost three hundred and sixty-five days a week, a year. I had, my brother's moved into one right now while this new house is being built with his RV, he sold his house, took the RV, he's at a campground.
How long did his camper sit in his driveway?
He didn't have to worry about it where he lived, he had it, uh, he lived outside of them. Don't you?
And I'm just, oh, go ahead. Sorry, have we looked at any, like, neighboring cities and, like, what they do?
Not in depth, I know there's some things that Twinsburg does differently than us, but I'm not telling you them off the top of my head. But I thought, get it introduced, we could talk about it, not even worried about doing it rapidly in three readings, because anything we do wouldn't be impactful till next spring anyway, right, so we have time. Um, I did, um, learn from Director Gaddetti that this does also have to go to planning, because it's modifying the zoning, and we don't have a choice in that. So, at some point, we should come up with a conclusion and send it to planning, and then have them send it back to us.
Okay, we'll streets grow May first.
May first.
I did hear from somebody out of the city that they start in April, they pull it out in April and de-winterize it for May. So maybe, uh, maybe a compromise is April something.
April fifteen.
Um, but... Keep April first.
Does anybody else have any questions, or do you guys wanna?
Is that the, the change?
Um, there were some changes in here to prevent people from trying to use it to live in it in their driveway. So there's some limitations in here about permanently connecting it to water and electricity. There was some, um, discussion I had about not prohibiting electricity, because if you're preparing it, you may wanna plug your refrigerator and your air conditioning in while you're in it, um, so there needs to potentially be some language there that says not permanently connected electricity.
Okay, my second question is...
Yeah.
Sometime ago, and I didn't look, I didn't reference it yet, 'cause I just thought about it today, how is, if it's not, can't be seen from the street, and again, we have the issue with corner homes.
Right.
Okay, what happens to the people that, when the law was changed the last time, that spent money to comply with that, are now stuck in a hole again?
They can use that change to begin compliance outside of the exclude months, so it'd still be valuable to them, because after, in that window of the, the winter where they're not allowed to have it visible from the driveway, they would still need the improvements that they did. Or they would have to store it offsite.
They have it, one of the ones I, I observed is stored behind the front line of the house.
Yeah.
It's a fishing loom.
They would need that.
To bed, like a, they don't even have a big bed.
The requirement's still there, the, the requirements are still the same, it's just carving out an exception for that specific category is essentially what this is doing.
So anything they've done, it was still...
So you store it where you store it, so either you store it in your garage behind your house, or you store it up next to your house, but now you can work on it without, you know, with no problem, you can pull it out from your storage behind your sideline and work out.
Right, they'd still need whatever they did, for the period of the year that's not exempted.
Well, right, but you still got the six, five or six months, whatever you decide that they're gonna have to move.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
But they have the option to pull it out in their driveway if they choose to. If that makes sense, right, if they don't wanna keep it in whatever it is you just said they built, let's say, any of those...
They didn't build anything, they, they added the concrete, put it behind, behind the front line of the house.
Right.
And it's, they complied with the law that was changed at whatever time that was changed, and now they're gonna have to spend the money and the time to change it again.
What?
No, they wouldn't need it.
Nobody needs to change anything.
Nobody needs to change anything if they've done that.
You don't have to pull up the concrete.
All this is doing, this is just relaxing the requirements for like a...
So he can keep it there twelve months a year?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Even though it can be seen from the street?
Absolutely. All this is doing is saying for the summer months when people typically use them, the city won't send them a letter saying, you're not in compliance.
Okay.
We can go into it in more depth.
Well, not today, we've got a couple minutes.
No, not right now, I, I, you and I can talk about it, I, if nobody else has any questions, I do wanna give...
One really quick, um, that only applies to recreational, correct?
Currently, it's only recreational vehicles.
Pods and dumpsters and...
Correct.
We already have one on that.
Yep, those are recreational.
We adjusted that two years ago, I think?
Yep, 'cause there's, I mean, things like three years ago.
Um, somebody else?
Just wanna do first on that.
On mine? Yeah, absolutely first, and it looked like Nino had a comment.
Yeah, in addition to that, we have section three fifty-one nineteen, that probably should be removed, because it reads, "In residential district, private property, only passenger cars may be parked or stored overnight, except one truck may be stored or parked as a truck, so this ordinance just allows cars and trucks, doesn't even allow them, so that should be either, uh, changed or removed."
Yeah.
And then, um, a couple other things, I would probably, um, add to the language that the RV should be fully licensed and ready for highway use, so, you know, make sure we don't have any licensed vehicles there. And I would probably do some with, with temporary, what does the temporary mean? I mean, can we be specific about the timeframe, or if it's temporary, it could be thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, what is it?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, that's a good question, I agree with everything you said before that, I don't know the answer to the last one.
Well, every time they bring it back...
You start the clock.
You, you, yeah, you're, you're gonna hook up the water again, or the electricity again?
Well, they shouldn't hook up anything with electricity, no water, sewage, yeah.
No water.
And just for the record, we only received three complaints about those RVs over the years.
I was gonna say, those complaints, though, we handle, just so everybody knows, in the summer, it's always the same answer, well, we're prepared to go on a trip, so it's like, okay, no problem, I mean, we handle them that way, so we really don't do it differently, it's just, because, I mean, it takes time to prep a larger vehicle like that, they're packing it up, they're making sure everything's going, they're going on a long trip, they wanna make sure they're safe.
And one more issue, if you have a short driveway, and you have a forty-foot trailer, that could be impairing the vision of a biker on the sidewalk, so it could be a visionary, so we have to also address that.
That's the only complaint I've ever heard about RVs, is the fact that they can't see down the street.
That's supposed to be a problem in our neighborhood.
Yeah, you just can't see past anything.
So we're gonna run out of time, where it's actually seven thirty, I wanna give you a chance to talk about ordinance forty?
No, I'm gonna, let's leave ordinance forty at, at second reading.
Second reading?
Yeah, and we'll have more time to talk about it next time, that's fine.
All right, I apologize.
But just like yours, I'm not ready to get it, to get it passed, so we'll do, just leave it at second.
So we won't even bring it up tonight?
Correct.
Okay, it's seven thirty, we need to go off.
So, we're doing fifty six.
We have, what about fifty six?
What about the...
Oh, did I miss fifty six? Thank you, um, first read?
First read is fine, well, we can, there's no time limit to get there and place you.
Sorry about that, Ben.
Not a problem, I told you that, not a problem.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the July twenty-fourth and July thirty-first, regular and special council meeting perspective.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is public comments, we ask that you come to the microphone here, give your name and address, and you have five minutes to speak, so we have one today, Mr. Skirupa.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hello, I've seen it again, uh, Joe Skirupa, been a resident in Macedonia since nineteen seventy-eight, been a long time. I come here with two complaints, uh, one is the traffic light at South Bedford in Highland. Uh, this issue was brought up many years ago, when I was here at city council, regarding changing that flashing light to a solid red light to allow traffic and to improve safety, well, that was changed. But now, it seems like it's gotten worse, in the sense that I tried to make a left turn yesterday on Highland at four o'clock, and the traffic was past So Harv's, over the bridge, and three cars ahead of me tried to make a left turn, and it was a close call with another car coming on Highland going east. And my neighbor just told me, when I told him where I was going, he said, Joe, my cars are backed up to my house, and school's not even out yet, or in session, and he is eight houses from Highland Road. So, there's a safety issue, and maybe there's more traffic now, or maybe the syncing of the lights has changed, but from my going down South Bedford, at four o'clock, three forty, uh, yeah, around four o'clock, the traffic is heavy. You can't make a left turn. Around five thirty, it lets up, now this is without even the school traffic and the buses. So I just asked to reevaluate that and see where it stands in order to improve safety. Making a left turn could be dangerous, I don't know if there've been any accidents, but there've been some close calls, uh, in the past, trying to make a left turn. Right turns are easy, um, when I tried to make my left turn, a car stopped to allow me to get through, but I had to inch very slowly to see what's coming in that other lane, and it was clear, but eighteen-wheelers come down that lane pretty quick, other cars pretty, come pretty quick when they come off eight and shooting down Highland. So it creates a very dangerous situation, so I just asked to reevaluate that flashing light, for it to be on maybe from three to five thirty. That's my situation, I don't have, any of you experienced that as well, I see a couple of heads nodding, is, yes?
I live, uh, on Blue Jay.
Yes, I know, yes, yeah.
And, uh, our service director lives on Robin, so he's familiar with it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I honestly don't think of it that often, 'cause I, I avoid it, so you're, you're absolutely right, though, and every time I go there, I'm like, you know, sometimes I make a right to make a left.
Yeah, and sometimes, uh, most of the time I go right out on my driveway, but sometimes I go left, and just the other day, it was like, oh gosh, I gotta go to city council, because this has happened, it was like, ah, it'll be okay.
We are adding a turn lane, when is, when is that turn lane coming, twenty, twenty-seven?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, uh, a right-hand turn lane.
On Highland?
That'll, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, South Bedford, South Bedford on the...
Oh, that's great.
So that'll ease up the, the depth of the traffic, but that's still the...
But still, the left turn is an issue on the flashing light, that's the big issue. Yeah, the right turn will make, you know, facilitate the flow of traffic, but that left turn, cross your fingers, so please look at that. Secondly, the two vacant buildings that are eyesore's here in Macedonia, the old BP station that's been vacant for, I don't know how long, and then the hotel that's over there behind the car wash, what's happening with those two?
So I've been fighting that battle for a long time, and I'm, I'm gonna be very careful and turn it to the law director in a moment, but...
Okay.
Obviously, I'm incredibly frustrated with the Keyon and what's transpired there, um, it's to the point now where it's shut down, which was goal number one.
Yeah.
That's where that's at right now, um, the BP station is another one where I have been, uh, working very diligently with the law department to try and get that building either demolished, demolished or occupied. Uh, we were almost at the point of demolition, and then, of course, an injunction came into court, so I, I'll hand it over to the law director at this point.
Yeah, so both, both situations, uh, currently in litigation, um, the BP, the status of that litigation, we're really right up to the point, we're, we're about to have a settlement agreement executed, which I guess is news to everybody, uh, except for the mayor, but, um, and we have some very specific requirements to improve the appearance of the facility, and like the mayor said, to try to encourage as much as we possibly can that that be made productive, meaning this is going...
Okay, great, great.
So, you know, I think we have that in a good place right now. The Keyon property is a little bit more complex, as the mayor mentioned, we went out and actually got an injunction through the Southern County Court of Common Pleas to stop operations there because of safety issues and the nature of the building. Simultaneously, it was going through a foreclosure action through the bank that had a mortgage over the property. That foreclosure has fairly recently been granted, went through a couple attempted sheriff sales, my understanding, and don't quote me on this, but my understanding is, it's currently being considered for purchase by a third party to potentially be put back into use, and we're basically waiting to see how that's shaping up, but we're also trying, um, to make it very clear, if that doesn't happen in the immediate or future, the city's gonna take additional steps.
Yeah, so I, I remember seeing the BP signs that Fike was going to demolish it, and I had heard through friends who I know, Paul Fike, and he said, yeah, I'm gonna tear it down, and the next couple days later, it was, all the signs were taken down, so...
It was eleventh hour, and ironically, it's funny you bring this up, 'cause I was on the phone with, uh, a senator today talking about this, 'cause there's a bill that's flowing through, and if you look down in Boston Heights, and I brought that up to him too, with that hotel that sat vacant for years, why does it take this long, and why do these folks have the right to, to leave a dilapidated building sit like that? I mean, that's just not conducive to anything good.
No.
So, I, I'm, I'm with you, and I'm, I'm working on it, unfortunately, I'm at the mercy of, of the courts, and it really, really frustrates me.
Uh, on the hotel, you said somebody may purchase it and reuse it as a hotel, is that kinda what you hear?
I'm not sure, I don't have information on the specific use, but that would be my best guess.
Needs a lot of work.
It sure does, and that's probably an understatement.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Please address the light issue, I don't wanna have an accident with me and my wife, so thanks, all right, thank you all.
Okay, next up is correspondence from the clerk.
Yes, I have two pieces this evening, uh, the first was sent to the fire department, it says, Chief Ripley, I would like to thank the squad that came on April twenty-first while I was having an episode of chest pain. I did not wanna go to the hospital, but know I should, the paramedics gave me time to consider my situation and what best to do. I was very impressed with their professional appearance, conversation, and courtesy towards my husband and me, and each other. Your leadership promotes this, and the general public in your care appreciates this. Um, the staff on scene were Lieutenant Natali, Fire Medic Antonio Bernardo, and Fire MTE Tylo Jellison, that's from, thank you, Janice, Meredith, and family. Then we also have an email, uh, from Vinnie Milliotta, says, good afternoon, council, my name is Vincent Milliotta, and I'm a Macedonia resident, I'm writing to express my opposition to the proposed dog slash animal at large ordinance. This modification introduces criminal sanctions for what is inherently a civil issue. The change to the definition of quote, dogs at large, would open the door to making even minor issues, such as dogs walking on tree lawns, punishable by fines, or in cases of repeated offense of jail time. In my view, this is an extreme measure for something billed as a quote leash law, especially for a measure intended to improve living standards and quality of life for the community. Pushing through this ordinance, which I believe is both unnecessary and unwanted, largely at the behest of a vocal minority, will lead to an even, uneven enforcement and the criminalization of everyday activities for the majority of residents. The last meeting, I was caught off guard by some of the accusations and questions directed at me for speaking against this ordinance. Afterward, I reviewed the legislation again, as it currently stands, no quote, dog at large may enter another property, another's property, or be on public land. The current bill changes this to state that if any dog enters someone's property, whether restrained or accompanied, the dog is considered at large, and the owner can be fined or jailed, this, in my opinion, is excessive. Another point raised is about being a quote, good neighbor, and allowing dogs to walk on tree lawns. When neighbors are not being good, or disputes arise over dogs being on or off property, such matters should be resolved through civil channels, not criminal ones. Evolving law enforcement for these issues wastes community resources and the valuable time of our officers. A few weeks ago, I sent the council president a version of the ordinance that I believe would better serve the right needs of residents while establishing the desired leash restrictions, I urge the council to adopt that version instead. If that does not occur, I respectfully request that council members vote no, and ask the mayor not to sign this ordinance. As written, this bill contains numerous flaws, and it appears that my concerns are being overlooked by some of my representatives. Please take my thoughts into consideration, and know that I'm not alone, many other residents I have spoken with share these reservations. Thank you for your time and service to the community, and that is it.
Thank you. Okay, next up is pending our new legislation, um, do we need to read forty, Mr. Gaddetti? Okay, then we'll move right to ordinance number fifty-one.
I move to offer ordinance number fifty-one, twenty twenty-five, for a second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending portions of chapters eleven sixty-three and eleven seventy-one of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia relative to new residential driveways and parking areas.
Would you like to speak to this one? Oh no, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm thinking of the wrong, and you guys got me twisted up today. Mr. Monica, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, this ordinance would require replacement of existing residential driveways to be hard surface, uh, concrete or asphalt. And again, this is just to ask permission of the, uh, council to, um, be proposed to the, uh, to the planning commission for discussion, review, and hopefully approval.
Thank you. Ordinance number fifty-three.
I move to offer ordinance number fifty-three, twenty twenty-five, for its first reading by title only.
Emergency ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property to be of public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcels, requiring the owners of the improvements on such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an NCR municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to of our revised code sections five seven zero nine dot forty, five seven zero nine dot forty-two, and five seven zero nine dot forty-three.
Director Vares.
Thank you, mayor, uh, this is the, uh, what's it called, Divinity something?
Divinity Landing.
Landing, okay, up by the bowling alley there, uh, even though it's, you know, not totally desired by everybody, I would be remiss not to, uh, create a TIF ordinance for it, uh, because it is under construction, and we could capture some dollars that would've went... because it is under construction, and we could capture some dollars that would've went to the county for public infrastructure improvements around that area.
Thank you. Ordinance number fifty-four.
Mayor, I offer ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the director of mayor to enter into a contract with Ohio Paving and Construction Company, Inc. for certain Longwood Park trail improvements in the city of Macedonia.
So this flew through the Parks and Rec Commission, and if you'd like to talk about it, I'll hand it to you. Otherwise, I'll.
Well, Parks and Rec Commission has been, um, wanting to do this probably for the last eight years, um, to get some paved trails put in Longwood Park outside of the woods so that it, um, gives people a different place to walk. It also allows for more accessibility. It helps with people, uh, you can also, you should also be able to bike on it. They'll be ten feet wide. Um, so this is something that, that our, uh, Parks and Rec Commission has been pushing for. Um, and we are, we are very glad, um, that Mr. Vares and Mr. Gelati, um, and the previous people that were involved with the Parks Department, um, helped make this happen, and we are so excited to see this to finally come to fruition. And it looks great. It's gonna be about a mile long, um, from the, so they're not doing any changes to the, the, uh, trails that are within the woods. They're great. Those are still gonna be, um, uh, chipped, uh, chipped asphalt in there. So this is gonna be, um, accessible from the parking lot in, at the rec center, around the baseball fields, around the outside, uh, the west side of the park. Um, it takes you up by the Longwood Manor, and it just, um, will, I think it will add a lot. And I think it's great because it is, it is one of the things that we're able to do that is absolutely for everybody in the park. Um, any, anybody, any age, any mobility, um, any skill that you have is, is gonna be great. So I thank you guys for, um, getting this going, and I, and we really can't wait to see that when it's done.
And this'll be ten feet wide, one point zero four miles, and we chose the lowest and/or best contractor, which was Ohio Paving and Construction, who's done work for us before, and we were very satisfied with the quality of their work. Did I miss anything, Mr. Gelati?
All sounds good, both of you guys.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Um, when do we believe it'll be ready? This fall?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a this-fall project.
Great.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I very happily move that we pass imposed ordinance fifty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance fifty-four carries. Ordinance number fifty-five.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance fifty-five, twenty-twenty-five, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section eleven seventy-one dot one-two of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia relative to recreational vehicle parking and residential districts.
President Garvis, would you like to speak on this one?
I'd be thrilled to speak to this one. So, um, we received, um, some feedback from a resident recently about our limitations on where recreational vehicles can be parked on private properties. And the idea behind ordinance fifty-five is to start opening the discussion among council on trying to open that window up so that during the summer months when residents are using recreational vehicles, they would be permitted to have those vehicles forward to the front of their house or, um, basically visible from the street. We had some really good conversation and work sessions, learned some things from, um, the building department that we need to consider. And, uh, I think we had some lively discussion among council, and I'm hoping we can spend some time coming up with what council thinks we should do here, and then we'll send it to planning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance number fifty-six.
Mayor, I offer ordinance number fifty-six, twenty-twenty-five, uh, for its first reading only by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter seven sixty-one of the city of Macedonia's codified ordinances pertaining to peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers.
Councilor Ventura, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, uh, solicitation has been a problem for a long time, off and on. Uh, this year, because I'm running for reelection, I've had to knock on doors and talk to actual residents and ask questions, and they've asked them of me. And that has been the biggest complaint so far this season that I have received. It's becoming a real problem. Um, we even had a resident that is also a Macedonia employee. And when he asked for the, uh, ID and permit, when somebody walked up his drive, the young man covered his shirt, took off his hat, and started running down the driveway. Uh, did call the police department. They could not locate him. Uh, this is becoming very annoying. Somebody in my, uh, complex was, uh, they tried to get her to sign a contract by scaring her. She wasn't ready for it. Uh, felt a little bit out of sorts for it because her husband passed away earlier this year. I keep an eye on, on that. And it's, it's just something that we have to get control of, and we have to have some teeth on it. There has been nobody, uh, that disagrees with that. We're just, as, uh, Mr. Garvis said about, uh, his, we just gotta get some good conversation going and come to an agreement about how we're gonna handle this and, uh, what we're gonna put into effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodetti, can you quickly explain why we can't just outright ban peddlers and solicitors?
Because we will, that will generate a lawsuit, and there's case law which essentially says that municipalities cannot outright prohibit solicitation and canvassing based on constitutional grounds.
Thank you. That's usually a question that comes along with the question of, you know, why are these people knocking on our doors? So we, we can't, uh, we can't keep it from happening, so it's good that we're starting the conversation about what we can do to make it, you know, tightly restrained as possible.
And that, that litigation is what generated us to amend our ordinance back in twenty-seventeen to begin with. And this would be, I think, the main focus of this proposed legislation would be to add some clarity, maybe enhance some of the, um, restrictions, um, to make it more suitable for Macedonian residents.
Thank you. Any other motions or legislative actions?
Hearing none. I'll move into the mayor's report. Uh, just for information purposes, city hall, starting on Monday, our elevator is going to be down for, I don't wanna say replacement, but for a lengthy repair. Uh, that repair could take up to a month. So if you require use of the elevator to get to the basement, it will be out of order for at least a month. So we're hoping for less time than that, but, uh, we'll see what happens. That's a, that's a big job and long overdue. Uh, it's had, it's had its issues of late, and, uh, we need to get that corrected. Second most important thing, watch out for buses. School starts next week. Uh, know to stop when you see the stop sign out. If you're unsure, just stop. If you have questions about it, we'll put a post out. I know we do every, every year around this time. I didn't even, I didn't even see it yet, so thank you to Mrs. Young for, for getting that before I could even see it. Um, if you don't know, ask, and we'll, we'll help you out. We'll figure out what you need to know. Uh, I wanna thank our safety forces, especially the fire department of late. They have been incredibly busy. There's a lot of things I'm sure the assistant chief will touch on. I'm not gonna steal all his thunder. But they've done a pulchritous job of late of taking care of our residents, and we're very happy for the safety that they provide for everybody. And I wanna thank you for that and the police department, and more especially, our dispatchers. Because they, they are the, the beginning of it all, and if they're not doing their job correctly, it's gonna make everything else more difficult. So you guys have really done a great job of late, and it's been busy because I, I have the, the radio piped into my office, and I can tell you, that thing goes absolutely nuts, and it's insane the number of calls we've had lately. Face every day. So, so thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate all you do, and ladies, for all that you've done. Uh, we had talked for a long time about hiring an assistant building commissioner. Uh, we have completed that, and I don't know if you were gonna touch on that. I should save it for you, but, um, it is a very, very difficult field to get people in. And, and what we're starting to look at and why we put this through before, and I mean, we've had this on the books for better part of, what, six months at least?
Yeah.
Um, it's hard to find someone with the certifications. The state's actually working on loosening the certifications for the folks that can do that. Uh, the gentleman we found is very close to getting his full certification. But I think with him being under Commissioner Monaco's wings, he's gonna teach him a lot. And what this does is it's planned for the future. I mean, I want Nino to stay forever, but that's not realistic. And when he decides it's his time and he wants to retire, then we'll have someone ready to go. So it, it's kind of putting us in a position to plan for that. I talked to a lot of other mayors, a lot of other communities. They don't have people. They don't have people with the talent that I have here or we have here with Commissioner Monaco. He's very, very knowledgeable and very good at what he does. So if he can give that knowledge and start to train someone, and when he decides he wants to retire, then we have someone ready to go. So I'm sure you'll touch on that, but I'll, I'll leave that alone. Uh, last but not least, please don't drive distracted. Put down the phones and drive your cars. The worst thing you could possibly do is be on your phone while driving your car. It's very dangerous. Don't do it.
Committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission is next Wednesday at six o'clock in upstairs, um, at the rec center.
Finance? Okay, we have come to a conclusion on finance, uh, committee meetings. The agenda will start on September eleventh. Uh, one hour before caucus, we're gonna cover capital for police-fire service in city hall, and then capital on family rec, uh, center and streets. And we'll go over the debt and answer any questions that council or anybody else may have.
Thank you.
That's just September eleventh, or those are the three different?
Those are the three different areas. I don't think that we can get through everything in an hour, depending on.
Okay, so it'll be September eleventh, September.
He's, he's got all of the dates. Uh, Mr. Vares has all of the dates separated and what will be done. Uh, he would hope.
I'm just asking what those dates are. What, what are the dates other than seventh, September eleventh?
Okay, the, uh, next one will be October.
No.
No, that's not correct. September twenty-fifth, that will be the total operating budget. Questions and comments. And then October twenty-third, uh, the annual appropriations ordinance, uh, for the first reading.
Thank you. And those are all about an hour?
I don't think, uh, no, the other, the other two will be a half hour.
Okay, thanks.
Any other committee reports? Hearing none. We'll go into department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you touched on, uh, we will, we have been working on the elevator, elevator project for a while. Um, and it finally takes place starting this Monday. We'll have a couple guys working with them. Um, the rec center shutdown's coming up, um, so we will, we'll have several, uh, maintenance workers there working on various items. Uh, we have a few sort of big stormwater projects coming up on Thistle Ridge. And we just, uh, finishing one up on Park Avenue. Um, so also trying to finish up ditching, but other ditching items keep coming up all the time. Stormwater projects just seem to always be, um, important and an issue. Uh, we do have some new employees gonna be starting in the next few weeks. Two maintenance, uh, two maintenance techs that we hired. Um, and one admin who is in addition to our current admin in service. Um, so that's exciting to, to bring that first in and, uh, be able to have someone trained prior to the new building being built. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Gelati.
Yes, thank you. So, uh, as you folks know, Led Road paving, phase one was completed, uh, recently. Uh, phase two, that's the portion between the railroad bridge and North Bedford Road. Uh, will be starting in the new fu, near future. As soon as we have a exact start date, we'll alert everyone through the the usual channels, uh, website and social media, what have you. And, uh, update at the Highland Valley View intersection. Uh, the utilities are done relocating their lines, moving them back away from the intersection, the overhead lines and what have you. Uh, so ODOT is telling us that, uh, within the next two weeks, ODOT and their contractor expect to mobilize into that intersection to begin the widening of the pavement for the new turn lanes uh, and the new traffic signal. End of report.
So in other words, if you live in this area and you have to travel through there, you should probably avoid that. It's gonna be traffic delays, I'm sure, and that's gonna last for, for some time. So if you have an alternate route, you may wanna take that.
Correct.
Director Eckendorf.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, uh, we held our touch-a-truck last week. It was a gigantic success. Uh, just wanna thank service, police, fire, um, all the other vehicles that were there. Um, but also those who attended, uh, those who also helped us make that event happen. All in the rec department, uh, and all the workers, uh, for the city. So thank you. Um, it was. So, uh, thank you for those. Um, we do, as Director Wilson mentioned, we do have our annual shutdown. Uh, the pool will be shut down starting August twenty-first, and the building itself will be shut down, uh, the twenty-fifth. Uh, both of those will reopen, uh, on September second. Again, working on maintenance projects, uh, that includes some work on the activity pool, uh, and some other, uh, smaller projects. Um, we also, um, just recently added a member of our staff. Uh, we recently hired the rec manager for sports and facilities. I'm excited to get this person on, on-boarded and, uh, rolling. They should be able to hit the ground running. Um, I'm really excited to have them onboard. So, um, they start, uh, later this month. And, uh, finally, uh, we are head-deep in Fall Fest planning. Um, that is happening September twenty-seventh. That's a Saturday at Longwood Park. Um, that does include the fireworks that were supposed to happen for the summer send-off. Um, so that should be a great event, and look for more information for that coming up. End of report.
Thank you.
Hey, this, this is the silence button right here.
It is, it is.
Director Vares.
And I turned mine off so it doesn't say not again when I do my report. So, uh, as you know, um, the resident refund, uh, date has passed, but we will, uh, honor anyone who has a Rita extension. So get those returns in if you haven't filed them yet. End of report.
Thank you. Uh, Director Collins is on a much-needed vacation, so we'll move right to Commissioner Monaco.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the sidewalk repair program is in full swing. Uh, the contractor started at the northwest corner of the city. He completed Langston Road and right now is, uh, on Firestone and, uh, some of the side street just east of Firestone. We, uh, estimate that twenty-five thousand square feet of concrete will be replaced when the program is completed. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, we hired an assistant building commissioner. His name is Todd Allen. He comes to us from, uh, uh, Summit County. He has twenty-five years' experience with the county. He holds, uh, all the certificates except the plumbing. Uh, and I, if I can, I would, you know, help him also get the certificate. He's very excited to join us, and we are very excited to have him. I think he's gonna work out really great. He's gonna be a great addition to the department and to the city. Just today, I received a drawing for a new business moving into the city. Hand and Stone Massage and Facial Spa is moving into five hundred East Aurora Road, so next to Sephora. And lastly, Divinity Landing, uh, when they removed all the trees, we received a lot of complaints from the residents because all of a sudden their privacy was removed. And, uh, you know, I assure them that, you know, before we issued an occupancy permit, and when all the trees are planted, they were, I would meet with each individual resident and discuss individual situation so that if we need to change some trees to give them some privacy that was removed from them or to add some trees, I promised them that I would do that for them. That's my, end of my report.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, since everyone else talked about the five employees we hired, HR has no reports.
Perfect.
Well, good work.
Assistant Chief Silenski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, thank you very much for your kind words. Uh, it means a lot to our department. I just wanna touch a little bit about, uh, the month of July was probably, or I, I know for a fact it was our second busiest month that we've had. We ended July with four hundred and forty-five calls for service. Of those, four hundred and forty-five calls for service, two hundred and twelve of them were in Macedonia. One of the things that we do pay attention to is when we call for help, mutual aid. Mutual aid in, mutual aid out. In the month of July, we went out nineteen times to assist, uh, area communities around us. And, uh, we called for help fifteen times out of those four hundred and forty-five runs. Um, I do want to talk a little bit and thank publicly, um, well, first of all, on the, uh, day of the touch-a-truck, it's a fabulous event, and we enjoy being part of that event, so.
We enjoy having.
Business called, and we apologized. Uh, I happened to be the one that was actually there the longest trying to collect us and bring the rest of the department. It was, it was a, a fun task, but also we found that, um, and we knew that, uh, the lifelike was a huge attraction. Um, but, uh, had to offer an apology to them because we were trying to gather up and go to that. They needed to gather up and leave, but at the same time, we were leaving. So, and service was trying, we were pulled in both directions. So thank you, Mr. Wilson, for, um, always, uh, giving our department, uh, the help we need when we ask. We appreciate that greatly. Um, oh, so want to, um, uh, that, that call that, uh, that we went on, it was a commercial fire, um, on Bavaria Road. Road. It was a manufacturing and packaging facility of cardboard, and the fire had actually started in a cutting machine, and they actually take and make different sized boxes or whatever and print on them, and the size and vacuum that they had to take the remnants away takes them to another place in the plant called the baling area, where they just take the scrap and they pile scrap and collect it. The fire actually started at the cutting machine, and they didn't even know it, but thanks to the video stuff that was available inside the facility, we were able to identify that. Nobody was hurt, that's a thankful thing always, and it was just machinery that was damaged for the company, another good thing, no structural damage, no safety risk for, more risk than necessary. But thank, thanks to the eight departments that helped us, Twinsburg Fire Department, Norfield Village, Hudson Fire, Hudson EMS, Valley Fire, Oakwood Fire, Streetsboro, Stowe, and then, of course, Macedonia PD, always helpful, moving hose, traffic control, we appreciate that very much. And a special thank you to the Red Cross and the 360 to Go. Fabulous, we were on scene from roughly 5, whatever time that came in, until like 1:30 in the morning, and then we actually had crews stay overnight, so that was much-needed food and refreshments for our staff, so we appreciate that, thank you. The other large thing that happened, that was on Thursday, August 7th, for Toucha Truck. We just recently, on Tuesday, August 12th, we were dispatched to Route 8 northbound for a significant accident. We had a stakebody truck with some steel on it that went off the road and into the woods. We needed to shut down Route 8. I think we shut down Route 8 northbound from 3:30, or 3:05 to 6:00. Okay. So again, thank you guys and your staff for that assistance to make that safe, and again, for the service department and that. I mean, we couldn't even, other than our guys crawling through the trees, we could not extricate or use our extrication equipment on that person to get him out of the truck until we cut the trees out. It was that bad, and that was deep, deep into the woods, and there was that many trees on top of that truck. So again, thank you for your support always. And that's all I have for the fire department, so thank you again.
Thank you. Chief Akapovich.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was gonna talk about full series we had to cover. I'm gonna talk about what a success Toucha Truck is, that's for sure. Dispatchers, we are still looking behind our dispatchers, we had three interviews today. We have a lot of good candidates, and we're hoping to move forward soon. End of report.
Thank you. Director Gooddey? Any unfinished business? New business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You are adjourned.